Tonight, this constitutes a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. And at this time, I'll accept a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavin. In discussion, all in favor. It's approved on a four-oh vote. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the mayor's report. The mayor's never looked better.
The mayor is in Jackson, meeting with senior officials in state government, talking to them about helping out Biloxi. We have no other report.
Okay.
Ms. Diana Thornton and I will be here to answer your questions about the budget.
All right, and a good time will be had by all. Okay, department reports, I don't believe we have any. That brings us to the council reports. I'll start with Mr. Glavin in Ward six.
I have no report.
And I have no report. Mr. Demming, Ward four. No report. Mr. Lawrence, no report. Good, that brings us to the public agenda, which again is a public hearing on the budget. The clerk would read the agenda item, please.
Public hearing to provide the general public with an opportunity to comment on the taxing and spending plan incorporated in the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122.
Thank you. At this time, if the administration might want to give us an overview, a brief presentation, if you will, and we'll welcome Mr. Barrett here.
Mr. Tisdale, were you going to invite the public to make statements? Are we skipping that?
Well, I'd like an overview first, and then we'll get to the comments, just so our viewing audience may follow along, know what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, council members, you've got four statements in front of you. Let me just bring, make sure that everybody's looking at the same thing. The first one is the combined fund statement. Do you see a combined fund statement? It's a long sheet like this. I want to be sure everybody's on the same sheet of music. Okay, combined fund statement. I want you to look at the fourth column over that says general fund. Notice the very first entry at the top of the page is the beginning fund balance. That's the estimated beginning fund balance. Down below, you'll see other, you'll see total revenues listed. You'll see a number sixty-eight million, seven-hundred-ninety thousand. Are you following? Okay. Follow down the same general fund sheet, and you get to the bottom that says total expenditures, seventy million, four-oh-eight, and one-seventy-seven. Finally, at the very bottom of the sheet, you find the projected ending cash balance of seven million, five-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, six-seventy. Okay, I'm just going through these right now, just so that you, we're all on the same sheet, and we'll have Q and A. On that same sheet, over on the water sewer fund column, notice that there's a beginning fund balance of two-point-five million. Now, remember, on both the general fund and the water sewer fund, or any other fund, the beginning fund balance is an estimate of what we think it's going to be three weeks from now. Down below that, you see the estimates, the revenues, which is really the collections of seventeen-point-six-eight-five-two million. Further down the column, you see the total expenditures, expenditures of sixteen-point-three-three-two million, which is a one-point-three-million-dollar to the good on projected cash balance, which brings us to the, all to the bottom of the water sewer fund column, and you see an ending fund balance of three-point-eight million. Okay, so that's that sheet. I know there's other stuff on that sheet, but I wanted just to go through those. Another statement that you have is the statement of all revenues. That's another big sheet. This, these numbers will tie. On the general fund, you'll see the total statement of revenues is sixty-eight million, seven-hundred-thousand, two-seventy-six. That's, that's general fund revenues. That's the only thing I want to point out on that sheet. The third big sheet is the one that you've been seeing all the way through. This is the one that's got the department budgets. You see in the top left-hand column, the same sheet that you've been seeing through the other workshops, where you see the seventy-point-four-oh-six-one-seventy-seven total general fund expenses, and the rest, and they're broken out now by personnel supplies, services, contractual, and capital outlays. And the last sheet that you have is the non-department funds, and that's the same sheet you've seen before. Talks about community development, community development, other, public transportation, and so forth. You'll see it's a twenty, twenty-one budget and a proposed twenty-twenty-two budget with changes shown. So those, those are the same, that's the same exhibit you'd have, you've had in the So again, I think, I think the key to all this, at least the bottom line on this, comes off that combined fund statement that we started with, is that we are, we're, we have a year in which we're starting with eight million dollars, estimated eight million dollars, and we- I think Diana would agree, that's conservative. We may do better than that. A combined eight, eight-point-million, starting, and seven-point-five at the bottom as the ending balance. So that's, that's the big picture. And with that, I'll go back to you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Thornton, did you have anything to add to that? Okay. At this point, we'll entertain comments, or we'll certainly, certainly give citizens an opportunity to comment, as we always do. We'll permit you three minutes to speak. Again, this is not a question-to-answer period so much as it is just to comment on the, on the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. Is anybody on my left, your right, that would like to speak? Ms. Hunt? When you come up, I think there's a sign-in sheet. If you would speak clearly into the microphone, so we know-
You want me to go over there?
-so the clerk can get your name and sign in with your name and address. Thank you.
Didn't mean to get you in trouble.
Excuse me, you want my address? My name is Susan Hunt, and I just want to thank you all for all your support of the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum. If you want a private tour, you want to come through and see, please let us know, and we'd love to give it to you. We've made lots of different, got new displays and everything. So let me know if you'd like to come, and, so that we can kind of keep you posted of what's going on. Thank you.
Ms. Hunt, you're usually not so brief. Did you want maybe another fifteen seconds?
No, I'd like to give it to someone else that would like to speak.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on my left, your right?
Let's see these numbers.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ruskey. Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thank you.
It's good to see you all again. I'm Sarah Ruskey, the director of the Harrison County Library System, and I sent everyone an email reiterating our request and asking you to reconsider your position on our requests for the additional sixteen-thousand dollars, and I hope you all received that. I, I know that at least one of you did. And I would just like to take the time to give you some voices from our patrons and from your constituents, who, we asked them if they would mind sharing why they would like us to receive support, and why we, y'all, they think you should fund the library. So I'm just going to read a few, a few words from some of, some of our patrons, who, we had a, over, several dozen, over a hundred people, who, in the short time that we asked for it, took the time to support us. So a lot of these came from the wool market community, and a lot of, most of them were very concerned with resources for children, and they said some things like, "We need libraries. It's important for children to have the opportunity to read books, and books contribute so much to language and vocabulary learnings," from a wool market patron. "Reading is the single most important way to expand children's minds," or anyone for that matter. "For many, the library is their only access to books and the internet," wool market patron. "My children love going to the library to pick out books each week. They are so excited to read them before bed each night. Reading to children has proven to improve language development and academic success." "Libraries offer vital resources to our communities. They provide computer services to those who cannot afford them otherwise, which in turn allows people to fill out job applications, work on their resumes, helps youth work on online homework, and simply connect with others. In addition to computer resources, it also provides much-needed activities, programming, and a safe haven for the community. It is also a place to simply be. A library is a beacon of hope and opportunity, a chance to read, inspire, and dream. It increases literacy, which literally can give a child 'the world,' emphasized. Please don't cut funding for our libraries. They are vital for the future of our communities." I read fifteen, this is another patron, "I read fifty, five to twenty books a day to my children and hope they will develop a big, a love of reading as I have. It is so important to show them how their world can open up through books, and libraries are the best way to do that." Another patron says, "I will never forget the sense of self and empowerment I felt when I received my first library card. This sense has carried on throughout my life to this very day. It is such a sense of pride, one that I wish to share with my children. Put money into libraries, not out of them. Supporting the children of the community means supporting your libraries. Ask yourself, do you support the children of the city? You can say yes by voting to support the library." "The library is a magical place for children and adults. It allows people to travel to foreign lands, be part of an exciting story, learn new skills in history. The library is also a place where young children can go for storytime, to ignite a love of learning at an early age. The library offers multiple programs for students and the elderly. It is a safe place for many children." Okay, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Ruskey.
Thank you.
Is anybody else on my left, your right, that wishes to comment on the proposed budget? Anybody on my right, your left, who wishes to comment? All right, this time, I'll give council representatives an opportunity to comment. We'll comment by ward. Mr. Lawrence, any comments on the budget?
Yeah, Mike, on this, what do you call, non-departmental report? Yeah, I would have met with Beverly Martin, one of East Biloxi Community Development, and she said she's not been part of that. At the meeting, they said that she was put up, supposed to put up fifty thousand, we were supposed to put up fifty thousand for this grant, for writers, for the federal government to one-point-nine billion, but she said she's, she said they had their own grant writer, they're not paying anybody fifty thousand to do that for them. So we got in there fifty thousand, so who are you actually looking at? We're going to have to, you're dealing with the federal government. Do you hire somebody that has any knowledge of how to deal with the federal government to get grants from them? Or we're just paying some person fifty thousand dollars write a grant? That's a lot of money.
Did the East Biloxi-
Right.
-foundation that, that you see, I think, is Peter in the room? Can't believe he's not here.
I mean, you know, and she, supervisor pulled up, supposed to be in half this money, so maybe that's not the best way for us to spend this fifty thousand. If they don't think too much of it, I don't know why we would go and then, and I don't know who you're hiring, if you're hiring anybody that has enough knowledge and experience to do that for us, or we're just paying somebody fifty thousand dollars. We have grant writers in the city, we have people in the city that can do this. You know, we got this Keith Hurd, I mean, I guess he does something. You got Grace Aaron, I mean, she writes grants, so here we paying somebody off the wall fifty thousand, have no clue what it is.
Peter, are we looking for a little explanation on the Greater Biloxi Economic Development Foundation?
The Greater Biloxi Economic Foundation, the twenty thousand?
No, the fifty thousand. East Biloxi Development, this is different than what-
Okay. This is, this is what Felix and the mayor and the county have developed to secure COVID-related funds for East Biloxi that they talked about last meeting, is that it?
Well, I was just telling them, you went in the room, but Beverly Martin said they're not being involved in that. They ended up putting up fifty thousand. So I think it needs to be discussed, it needs to be discussed a little further, and somebody got to explain to me who we giving fifty thousand to. We're talking about people looking for that fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars, and we're paying somebody fifty thousand? I mean, that's, I need a little more explanation than that.
Yeah.
And when the county pulled out, that's not good. So I think something needs to be done with this thing today, pull it off of there, whatever, and go back to it. I'm not sure. But I mean, she was supposed, the county was putting up fifty thousand, and the city was putting up fifty. And I remember, she said, they're not doing that, they're not interested. They had their own grant writers. So I'm just passing along to all the rest of the councilmen.
Budget?
That's what happened. That's the last meet.
To the budget. Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any real explanation of what the county did, that's-
Well, I wouldn't talk to myself. She told me she's not doing it.
Okay. Well, I think in fairness, the mayor and the Felix, they should be here to, to talk about it or explain it. It's, it's essentially, you know, when it first developed, it came through them, so I think before next week's final approval, that could be discussed.
Unless that's up to the rest of the council, if that's good with them, then that's fine. But I mean, first of all, you're going to pay money to somebody like that. I mean, I thought that Keith Hurd could do this, but Grace said, I mean, I don't know who you're going to hire. There's supposed to be an expert with the federal government to get this money. Because there was no name and nothing attached to it. We're writing, doing a grant writer. That don't tell me too much. So definitely-
Yeah, I know, I know the name is Addie Stover, A-D-D-I-E Stover Consulting, and I've, I think her resume is attached, or should be attached. I'm not sure about that, but-
Right. I've never seen anything like that. And how much experience she has in this particular, they're talking about going at that one-point-nine billion. I have no problem with taking a shot to get as much money as we, we can. I'm all for that. So that was just a wonder to bring that up. On this, this sheet here, Mike, where, where you kept saying it's seventy million, where is that at on this sheet?
The very bottom.
The sheet, I got a six-to-eight million at the bottom.
Several, in several places. The-
I have another sheet, I got-
On the combined fund statement under general fund-
Right.
Starts at the top, eight million, then it goes to sixty-eight million, seven-hundred, and revenues, then total department expenditure, sixty-five million, and you have non-department and other stuff. It only gets down to the bottom on, it says subtotal, and total expenditure, seventy million, four-hundred-and-six, one-seventy-seven. That's the total general fund expenditures. Column seven.
What sheet, you're looking at, this one? On the one with the red on it.
Have you got one that says combined fund statement?
Top left corner, top left corner.
Did I say I ain't seen eight million yet you keep talking about at the top? This says twelve million, or twelve thousand, I mean.
That's not it. This one. Talking about this number right here. The general fund, here's the seven million, million, general fund.
And the seventy millions on here, too? That's the seven-point-five? Oh, what did you talk about, the eight million? Not there, we're going to-
Beginning balance.
In this sheet. And the seventy million, you said, one-seventy-seven, where's that at? I saw it, didn't I, one? Seventy million.
Seventeen million?
Seventy, yeah. That's what he said, seventy million, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, yeah? Another one? What did this say? So what are these expenses?
Any expenses, our financing balance.
Any other comments?
I got some other ones.
Go ahead.
And I noticed, always, we always had the MGM park listed. Would y'all, where'd you put that at? That's not a city function, but it's something that you have to have on this. You have to have the money.
I look across the top, there's a number eleven at the top that says baseball stadium operations.
That's the baseball?
Baseball stadium operations.
Okay, which you have it listed. You just have the expenses, or what?
It has revenue and expenses. It has four-hundred-and-seven-thousand of revenue.
Right.
And a hundred-and-sixty-eight of expenses.
That's the lights, the water, and everything, is that only a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand?
Hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand.
And you got four-hundred-thousand from where?
We get rent from them and ticket sales.
And you get a hundred-and-fifty-thousand from the, the rental stadium.
Correct.
You get twenty-five thousand for maintenance.
That, that's in a separate fund.
Right.
Twenty-five thousand dollars goes in the capital maintenance fund.
But the note causes a million, too, so we're not doing too well, are we?
Well, that falls under debt service.
I'm just saying, so, once again, we're not doing too well. That's another one that's just not working out. And a couple of things on the, I still don't understand why we have twenty-nine people. Mike, I guess you could explain it to me, in the port. I know they said we have three of them in port time, but we always had twenty-one to twenty-two people working in port. Now we got twenty-nine people in the port.
Well, we have, we have twenty-nine this year. Twenty-eight in.
Yeah, and I'm saying, what I'm saying, why, how do we jump up so much, when you got to have-
They added a couple of people in the maintenance department. We have the same number of harbor masters, and full-time and part-time, but they did add additional maintenance personnel in there to do the small repairs, you know, the lawn, the repairing boards, whatever that's needed down there, too. They do a maintenance down there. So I think they, they put that to two more people.
We just seem to be going backwards in that thing, too, you know? Too many people. We have to win it.
That's also an enterprise fund, Mr. George, and it's, it's, all the monies that are in and out are to maintain the harbors.
Yeah.
They are doing fairly well, as you-
Yeah, like the water's-
It shows, it shows in column seventeen, a two-point-oh estimated starting balance in the fund, and an ending balance of two-point-one million.
Well, I guess I go back to all the time, they host the big tournaments, and they just seem to be having complaints, nobody to take care of, no trash cans, no calls, and if they pay a hundred thousand, well, excuse me, like I said, it was ninety-eight thousand, they paid them, the rental slips, and yet we don't see any cater to the people that spend that kind of money. And then you say we got more maintenance people, but we can't get trash picked up? Can't get, well, I'm just saying, it's all part of the problem, I listen to-
For the tournaments, or is that what you're talking about, the tournaments, Mr. George? Well, I think Mr. Savalich had told you that they had numerous garbage dispensers in there, and there was no complaints about the garbage or anything for these tournaments. The tournaments are doing very well, and they were, seemed very satisfied with the services that we're providing down there.
Well, that's just opposite what I heard. That's really going to bring this up. You know, they don't go to you, they don't go to him, they come to me. And I got a harbor sitting side of Ward one, so they're going to call the councilmen, so I'll pass it back on to y'all. And that's my job, you know?
I don't know, Mr.-
So yeah, I have a complaint, I'm going to tell you.
Answer that, I, I mean, I don't know. I was just trying to answer about the personnel, sir.
Yeah, and I noticed that enterprise fund, not supposed to make any money, you're just supposed to spend it back on the harbors anyway, so. So that was just another question, but I just thought that was, they have twenty-nine people down there, that's compared to what it was. He said we was under staff, so it was amazing, we was under staff, and we had the harbors full. Now we got way more people, we got to have the harbors filled, so. That's just another one of those things I hear constantly, you know?
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I'll come back if I come up with anything. Go on to the next one.
Go ahead and finish yours, I want to go around the room by ward, and then when we're done, we'll start our regular meeting, but-
And the other thing, I guess I was telling my pet peeve, my papa's not here, so I'll tell you again, I know we got it on the agenda, hiring somebody else for the court system, and I mean, something needs to be done with the court system, it's just not working. You know, it's not caught effective. We're losing a million and a half, a million three, a million four, the last two years, we lose three million dollars, and we, now we told, we can't arrest anybody, can't find anybody, so where do we even have the court system for, we can't do anything with it?
You know, we're not in the business of making money in the, in the court system.
You know, it's a world-
The business of having a court system. And one of the reasons we've pointed out in earlier workshops, is one of the reasons why the collected funds is down, is because the number of arrests is down. And we could, we could, I'm sure we'd, the count, the citizens of this city are happy about that. I don't, I don't think they're complaining about the cost of the court case, cost of court system. But I think they're, they're happy about the fact that arrests are down. Arrests are down, and therefore fines are down. And we, we're doing a better job of collecting than we did a year ago. We're still not making money, and don't intend to.
I never wanted to make money, I just wanted to break even. You can't lose a million three, a million four a year, that's all, that's all I'm telling you. Same thing, I'm not, we're not supposed to be making money, I just want to make sure we cover what we got in the city. You know, we got the ball field, caused another million and two, got this million three. You got two events to lose is three million dollars a year. I mean, you think about that. That's a lot of money. Anyway, we're not even getting any better, any closer.
Let me just briefly reply. What's on the agenda later on today is just to allow one of the clerks to, to be a clerk, so she can notarize police affidavits. It has nothing to do with hiring anybody. It's talking about an existing clerk giving them, giving them that right to swear out affidavits. I'll sit down with you again on your numbers, but, but they're not, they're just not accurate as far as, we're losing a million and a half. Collections used to be a million and a half, and now, then they went down to about a million a few years ago, before the ACLU. Now they're down to about four-hundred-thousand, roughly in that range. So to say we've lost a million and a half, that's not accurate. It's just not accurate. We, we did provide you the data. Arrests are half of what they were from when we were, when the fines were a million dollars. There's half the number of arrests. So fines are going to be half. They're not coming before the courts. We have instituted new collection procedures. I think I can provide you that in a few months, that the percentage of collections are going up. And we also have the community court fines, which didn't exist before, and those have gone up. So I mean, that's part of the overall collection of courts and fines. But I mean, the blanket statement that we're losing a million and a half, it's not accurate, and we're, and it's not our business either to, to make money off the judicial system.
The reason I said that, it costs us a million and a half to do it. You're collecting about four-hundred thousand, so we're losing a million one there. And I said a million three. That's all I'm saying, we're not, so yeah, we're not, we're not here to make a bunch of money on it, but you're not supposed to sit there and lose a million dollars a year either. That's a lot of money. When we're trying to get stuff done on our wards, and you're losing money on something like that, that just don't seem to be working. And I know the ACLU changed everything, and all that went away, twenty nineteen, they went back to everything originally. And you look at the last three years, and you tell me we ain't losing two and a half million dollars in the last couple of years?
Any other, any other comments?
You want to show me some numbers?
Any other comments, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Ward two, Ms. Newman, any comments about the budget?
Ward three.
Ward, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if Mr. Guine's in here, I apologize.
Not at this moment.
Okay. Ward four, Mr. Demming, any comments?
Just a few minor comments. First, I would like to remind the councilman, Mr. Lawrence, that we're not losing one-point-one million dollars because we're not collecting that money. Even if the budget for that is upside down, we're actually gaining tons by having a lower crime rate. If our arrest rate's down, that means more people are coming to our city, spending money. They're not worried about getting, dealing with- dealing with criminals or dealing with problems with their businesses or their homes. It's a, it's a huge benefit to not be collecting fines. Second, if we make it an enterprise fund, we run the risk of facing another ACLU lawsuit for turning our police into a pay-for-play system, and that would be worse. But I'm proud of the city for not, for, for losing one point one million dollars if it's because we're not arresting people that aren't committing crimes. Uh, now, one of the concerns that I have with the budget is that we're still a, a deficit budget in, in the sense that we're using savings to offset a shortfall of revenues or overspending. Say this every year, I know you guys are probably sicker, used to hearing it, but, um, there's, there's a lot of areas that I think we can, we can refine. The one thing that I've talked about since its inception was the engineering department. I don't know why we can't absorb that, have public works, works absorb that department like it used to be, saving a lot of duplicative costs. The contractual obligations that we, we use for outside engineers, which budget does that fall in? I don't know why I don't remember this off the top of my head right now.
Capital projects.
It's capital projects? So that cost isn't even in the engineering budget? So there, there's tons of savings I think we could find if we absorb that engineering department by the, the public works department. And our budget's, what, one point seven million dollars upside down and that department's one point five? I think a lot of savings could be, could be had if we eliminated that department. Saying that, we don't even have a director right now. I know that you're an acting director, but we don't have a legitimate bona fide director of, of engineering. Um, the mayor's not here either, so we'll be discussing this more the day we pass it, correct? So I, I have other minor comments that I don't think are gonna become controversial other than me just wanting to say them so I get them off my chest. So I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Newman, anything? No? Okay. Go to, uh, Councilman Glavin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I appreciate, you know, this is a requirement to have the hearing today to get public input. Um, but I will say this about this budget. Um, first of all, where you see the proposed changes, uh, the biggest change is in the police department for, for providing public safety for our citizens. I think that's a great investment, uh, that we're spending, uh, our resources in that area. I think, uh, as Mr. Demming eloquently, uh, talked about our court systems, uh, losing money or whatever that number is because we are having a low crime rate, I, I think that is important, that Biloxi has that reputation. So that, that's the right place to, uh, spend that money. We also see in, um, parks and rec, uh, there's a little bit of an investment in our parks and rec for our kids as we get through COVID and they return to the ball fields and be kids again and families can enjoy that quality of life. Uh, it's important that we, uh, keep our, our parks and those recreational facilities in, in top shape. Um, we're lucky, uh, that we do have some funding coming down, millions of dollars in, in relief in several different sources. And, uh, I believe this council has spent a great amount of time trying to get this budget right. I know every year we talk about this is a deficit budget or we're using savings to offset some of the expenditures, but we, this is just a budget, this is what our projections are. And if our expenditures, our, our, our revenues fall short, there's a thing called a budget amendment, which we do use from time to time and we will have to be smart in using that, that tool if we find those revenues are not coming in and we're getting, uh, kinda in the red zone. Um, and then finally, uh, public works, uh, we see an increase in public works and we've talked numerous times about ditches and, uh, about drainage and about bridges and, and different things that, that we need to, uh, make sure that we're not deteriorating to a point where our citizens can't enjoy, uh, their, their houses without the threat of flooding or the deterioration of roads or what have you. And, and I think again, that's another good area of, of, uh, spending some of our resources. Uh, when we look at the number of employees, there are increases. Uh, I think we, from year to year, we, we always try to be frugal in that area. Um, but I think we recognize with additional fire stations, the population increasing, uh, we need more manpower to provide those services, uh, to our citizens that they certainly will, uh, expect. So, um, I look forward, uh, to the final review of this budget. I'm sure there'll be some amendments and changes, uh, and tweaks as we move to finalize this budget and, uh, give our departments the resources to execute their operational plans. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glavin, Mr. Barrett.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, on contractual services for public works, um, so we actually, we cut the amount back, is that correct? From three sixty seven to three sixty one, it, three points, three million, six hundred and seventy four thousand to three million, six sixty one? Um, are we allocating anything in there for, um, easement, ditch, cleaning, anything like that?
We're, we're, we bought almost, actually over a million dollars worth of equipment. And that's showing up in the capital outlay.
Yeah.
And that's what most of that equipment's for.
Okay.
Including.
All right.
Vacuum trucks and, and, and mowers and side arm mowers and so forth. There's a lot of money in there. There's also, as you know, in personal services, extra bodies.
And then the only other question I had is, um, and, and I might be looking in the wrong place. Um, Back Bay Mission, are we doing anything? Okay, good deal, I just didn't see it, I didn't know if it was on non-departmental or not, okay, so, all right.
At one time, but we never get to it.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, the only comment I have is that I would, uh.
Be gone.
Certainly like, uh, for my colleagues here to, um, think about and reflect on increasing the library budget by that additional sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, prior to our next meeting when we approve the budget, which is next Tuesday at one thirty. Uh, and that's a special meeting to approve the budget. Um, other than that, at this time, I'll entertain.
I have, I have a comment, if you'd let me, please.
Sure.
As, uh.
Mr. Leonard?
Want to go back to the combined fund statement? I want you, I want you to find, and I, on the combined fund statement, on the general fund, all the way to the bottom, it's a negative six hundred and six, twenty six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. If you could find that and let Diana explain that to you.
Well, I was gonna go back to Demming's comment on us having a negative balance of one point seven. Our expenditures include three fire trucks that have another financing source that is below that number, so it's one point eight almost being financed. So if you included that figure, we would be positive. But we also have to contribute six hundred and twenty six thousand dollars to the health insurance fund, which brings us down to the bottom at a negative four fifty seven. But if we didn't have to contribute the six twenty seven to the health insurance fund, we would be a positive one seventy for the year. Right, we do.
Oh.
Right. But without that though, we would have been favorable because that one seven that you were referencing up top includes an expense that has another source that's down below. Right. We changed contributions, that number could go down.
And if our revenue assessments are conservative as they usually are. But Mr. Leonard, did you have another comment or was that it?
I just wanted to point that out because it's, it's a big number and it's, and it's one that we hope not to have to see there next year. It's almost the same number we are estimating in terms of anticipated savings on medical insurance.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to adjourn at this point.
Well, I would ask one question.
Mr. Lawrence, final comment?
I know when we talked to the fire department chief, they said y'all losing ten people that retired or whatever in the, the fire department, and we're not replacing anybody?
What we are doing in the fire department is we are immediately hiring ten new firefighters, which will fill all the known vacancies, the current vacancies in the fire department. But there's no increase over the budget from the previous year, we're just filling all the vacancies. We do intend later in the year to come back and ask for fifteen more firefighters when the safer grant is, becomes available. The safer grant's not available yet and it would pay for the first, I think it's three years of, of, of increases. So we hope to increase the fire department by fifteen positions later this year when the grant becomes available. Right now, all we're doing and, and have done is to hire the ten vacancies and those people are hired now and beginning to come to work.
I just wanna make sure you take care of them, that's all, you know?
Should I pass the test? Okay.
Another thing, Paul, if we wanna add something back to the budget, we supposed to do that right now, he supposed to do that another time?
Well, this was just for the public comments, we still have our, our meeting next Tuesday and we're gonna vote and everybody will have, you know, an opportunity to comment as, as well. But we need to nail all this stuff down at some point and hopefully we had already done that. There's, we're putting in our last request here, considerations, but.
Cause a couple of things there is supposed to be back into the parks and recs. And we talked about it at the beaten, but I don't know if they ever put it in there, so how do we find it out?
Well, I know that you.
On fire line equipment and that, adding back to a couple of these parks. Like Old Raleigh Parks, they supposed to put like twenty five thousand there to redo all the exercise equipment. We talked about it at the beaten, but I don't know if it's ever put back into the budget.
As I recollect, it was mentioned in the mayor's comment was, we can get that out of Parks and Recreation or something to that effect.
Rec, Sherry's looking at some grants for that.
Right.
And also, we had reached out to Jackson, Mississippi, cause we saw some equipment up in, up in their area. And they had got a grant from AARP that paid for those exercise, um, items that were at their park. Plus it also paid for gym memberships for their citizens.
All right, okay, thank you, Ms. Thornton.
And that's all great, I'm, I just wanna make sure it's getting done.
Sure.
Can I say one thing to Mr. Demming?
Uh, as, as long as this is your last.
Real short.
Go ahead.
If you're losing a million one in your business, would you do something different, try to change something? Or just say you'd be happy with that? Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. God bless you, Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Barrett, any discussion, all in favor? Thank you, we are adjourned for a few minutes. Thank you.